Actually cleans it up daily. He's only required to do it six times a year, but he does it daily as he walks 35,000 steps every day. He's retired Air Force pilot and kudos to him and thank you. And also a special thanks to Anna Patero. Are you still here, Anna? It was Anna's idea to start the Adopt a Street program. And along with her crew of Allison and Ruth and Cora, they do weekly cleanups of Loaf Road and Sassoon Valley Road. So thank you so much for getting us started on that program. And then I'd like to thank James Jensen, Boy Scout troop leader of 8317. They adopted a section of East Travis Boulevard. And then lastly, I just wanted to let everyone know that the City Hall does have a secure ballot box. You can drop your ballot off on the fourth floor of City Hall and the register our voters off the swap out box daily. So there's still two more weeks to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. City Clerk. So we have several presentations that we will be presenting this evening, starting with a proclamation declaring October as Filipino-American History Month. And Councilman Tim will be presenting the proclamation. I'm sorry, Vacaro. I stand corrected, sir. Thank you.
Vice Mayor. Okay, first of all, before I read this, I just want to say this proclamation means a lot to me, being my wife's heritage, her Filipino heritage, and the connection I've had with her family and the people in the city of Fairfield, Filipino-Americans. So I'm going to read this. Whereas October 18th, 1587 is the earliest documented proof of Filipino presence in the continental United States as the first Luzon Indio set foot in Morro Bay, California, and the first permanent settlements of Filipinos in the continental United States, Louisiana, occurred in the mid-1800s. Between 1906 and 1935, the first large wave of Filipino immigrants began to work as farmworkers in California and were an integral part of Solano County US Armed Forces, workforce at Travis Air Force Base, and Mare Island Naval Shipyard, all of which set in motion the economic, cultural, social, and other contributions that Filipino-Americans have made to our great nation. And whereas the Solano County connection to the Philippines first started when the US Navy sent ships from Mare Island to the Battle of Manila Bay during the Spanish-American War in May 1898, after which they subsequently returned for repairs. And whereas Filipino presence in Solano County dates back over 100 years, starting with the nannies and servants of US naval officers stationed at Mare Island after the Philippine-American War in 1902, and the Filipino-Americans compromised a large workforce sector at Travis Air Force Base, Mare Island Naval Shipyard, medical fields, business entrepreneurs, and the agricultural industry, contributing to the defense, economy, growth, and history of Solano County. And today, according to US Census Bureau, multi-year trend, Filipino-Americans continue to grow, and they remain the largest Asian-American Pacific Islander group in Solano County, the second-largest in California, and the third-largest in the nation. And whereas the city of Fairfield and the communities in Solano County have long recognized the contributions of Filipino-Americans, several of whom have dedicated many years of service as leaders with various government and private entities, as well as having served as educators, elected leaders, health and social workers, civil servants, military members, and whereas the Filipino-American National Historical Society established a commemoration of October as Filipino-American History Month, nationally with the theme for 2020 has Filipino-American activism. And whereas efforts should continue to promote the study of Filipino-American history and culture, as mandated in the mission statement of the Filipino-American National Historical Society, because the roles of Filipino-Americans and other people of color have been overlooked in the writing, teaching, and learning of United States history. And whereas it is imperative for Filipino-American youth to have positive role models to instill in them the importance of education, complemented with the richness of their ethnicity and the value of their legacy. Now, therefore, I, Harry T. Price, Mayor of the City of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2020 as Filipino-American History Month, and we encourage all members of our community to study the significance of Filipino-Americans, their chronicles, solid values, rich culture, enduring legacy, and the positive role models that are proudly and humbly displayed in transforming the diversity and rich history of our historic and beautiful city and our great nation. And I'm going to present this to Carol Rosario. Here you go, Carol. Thank you.
On behalf of the Phil Am community of Fairfield, Bacaville, and Sassoon, I would like to thank you for this award. And thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next presentation is a proclamation declaring October 24th World Polio Day. And I am humbled and grateful to be presenting this proclamation. And I say I'm humble and thankful because this proclamation is being presented to Rotary. If you ever wanted a group of individuals to get something done, ask Rotary, because they get it done. Is there anyone here from Rotary to come? Okay, you can come on up? Sure. I've worked with Rotary many years, as many of you have, and they continue to do amazing things. This is a proclamation from the office of the mayor, Harry T. Price, World Polio Day, October 24th, 2020. Whereas Rotary is a global network of neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers who unite to take action to create lasting changes in communities across the globe. And whereas the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self," inspires members to provide humanitarian service, follow high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in this world. And whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus, and in 1988 helped establish the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, US Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, and GAVI, the Vaccine Alliance to Immunize the Children of the World Against Polio. Whereas polio cases have dropped by, are you listening? 99.9%. Polio cases have dropped 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating this disease. Whereas to date, Rotary has contributed more than 2.1 billion with a B dollars and countless volunteer hours protecting more than 2.5 billion children in 122 countries. Whereas Rotary is working to raise an additional $50 million per year, which would be leveraged for maximum impact by an additional $100 million annually from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical staff, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. Whereas in addition, Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $10 billion to the effort. And whereas there are over 1.2 million Rotary members in more than 35,000 clubs throughout this world that sponsor service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, disease, hunger, illiteracy, and the environment in their local communities and abroad. Therefore, Harry T. Price, Mayor of the City of Fairfield, hereby proclaims October 24th as World Polio Day in Fairfield, and the mayor encourages all citizens to join him and Rotary International in the fight for a polio-free world. That is awesome. Congratulations.
I'd just like to say thank you for this proclamation from the three Rotary clubs here in Fairfield. Very proud to have three different clubs in Fairfield, but we appreciate this very much.
Can I get your name, sir? Okay, thank you. And our next presentation will be the Solano Commission for Women and Girls, presented by Rochelle Sherlock.
Oh, they're doing that in the back. Okay, so while they're getting started. Thank you so much. My name's Rochelle Sherlock, and I'm the past chair of the Solano Commission for Women and Girls. I was a founding member, and then the chair for the first two years. And it is my pleasure to be here. I'm not the only person that's affiliated with the Commission for Women and Girls. We also have Doris Panduro and Anna Patero, who are both commissioners that are here with us and have been with the commission since the beginning. Please advance the slide. So the Solano Commission for Women and Girls were an advisory body to the Board of Supervisors, and as such, one of the first tasks that we were responsible for was developing a status report on the status of women and girls in Solano County. I want to say that the, I don't know where I go with the next slide, that this report would not be completed without the very generous donations of Seroptemus International Central Solano, and Seroptemus International Vallejo, and Seroptemus International Rio Vista. We don't invest any of this report whatsoever. The actual research data and analysis was conducted by a committee from this. I was one of those members of the committee. And so we did a tremendous amount of work in order to pull this together. And it was through those generous donations that we were able to hire a consulting firm that did the production and helped write the actual report itself. So, you know, what we want to do is just tell you just a little bit about the findings and what we were looking for. First of all, this is just data, and we took broad, we wanted to look at broad data categories. And then when the commission sets some priorities, they can do a deeper dive into that. So moving on to two slides now. Okay, so all this data was pre-COVID. So there's a couple of things that we know has probably skyrocketed. We know poverty as a result of a loss of jobs. Domestic violence, child abuse, mental health issues, and suicide are both expected to go up. But people that work in those fields have been very concerned. It's something that they're watching. We're not always able to keep an eye on things like child abuse, largely because a lot of the people who would be mandated reporters would be teachers. And so when the kids weren't in school, there wasn't necessarily a set of eyes on them. It's one of the things that has vastly concerned me. So as we, as I share this data with you, keep that in mind. We collected the broad data. It was all from government or institutions. When I looked at crime data, it was actually all local data from our local jurisdictions and the sheriff's department. This doesn't, this report doesn't explain the why. It just presents the data at this point. So we wanted to tackle it in two, in two ways. So we can move on to the next slide. So, and then the next, our findings. Well, it won't be any surprise to you that females make up like roughly 50% of the population. Go girls. But then when we want, I want to take a look at the actual demographics, because when we talk about disproportionality or equity, it really comes to comparing the actual demographics to a particular issues or situations. And so I'm going to compare and contrast that a little bit later into this report. But just at a high level, white Caucasian females comprise, in Solano County comprise 38% of the female population, followed by Latinas at 25%, Asian Pacific Islanders at 18%, African Americans females at 14%, multiracial at 7%, and Native American, Alaskan natives at 0.4%. Moving to the next slide, one of the things we wanted to take a look at was related to poverty. And we know that females with children who are, tend to be 34% more likely to be single-headed households. So we're talking about single parents. And of those single-headed households, single parents, 40% of them actually are below the federal poverty level when considering geographic cost of living. Now, there's two pieces of data that's in the report. One is the federal poverty level itself, which is a very archaic measure and kind of applies uniformly across the United States. What we did was we went ahead and used the Family Self-Sufficiency Index to also get another piece to look at the geographic cost of living, and that's where that data comes from. As far as older women, when we're talking about seniors, they experience poverty at twice the rate of older males. And older females of color are at even higher rates of poverty. So it's an area that we need to focus on for the betterment of females in Solano County. So on the next slide, you'll see here food insecurity. So of the female single households, 52% are food insecure. That's at a much higher rate compared to the Bay Area and the state. And yet, at the same time, females who are food insecure- food insecure, female households that are food insecure, actually receive fewer food stamps at only 23.6% compared to the Bay Area and state, and they're receiving higher levels. For us, that's kind of a low-hanging fruit. That's, it's kind of a no-brainer. That shouldn't be happening. We should be able to change that metric. Moving on to civic engagement, this is one of the areas, and I wanted to just step back for a second. You know, the commissioners, you know, when we were talking and looking at this report, one of the things that, we look at some of the data and indicators that are available to us, and it doesn't always paint the pretty picture, but what we do know is that there are incredible female leaders, and congratulations to the chief as another incredible female leader here in Solano County, at all different levels, women own businesses, a lot of women with advanced degrees. So we know there's a lot of positive things, but the report itself ended up showing some of the indicators and areas that we need to focus on. But civic engagement is a positive thing. Nearly half of all elected positions are female, and females comprise 58% of elected positions in education, so it comprises a majority. Moving on to registered voters, actually 12% more females are registered than men, and what we see is that people that are 55%, 55 years and older generally are registered at voters, like roughly almost 50% are registered voters. So older, older persons are more likely to be registered voters. It's an area of get out the vote or whatever, you know, we want to engage people in this civic process. We didn't have the data for this regarding volunteerism, but I checked with just the Solano County's coordinator on, that manages the volunteer Solano portal, and she thinks that it's roughly 2/3 to 3/4 of volunteers tend to be women. You know, we all see women in a lot of, on a lot of boards, nonprofit boards, and engaged in a lot of community efforts, so they don't actually have data on that. It's an area that she's going to see if she can't influence the collection of that data, because that would be useful to have. Moving on to academic performance and educational achievement, that this came directly from Lisette Estrella Henderson, who is our Solano County Superintendent of Schools. And on the next slide, you're going to see that female students are outperforming male students, both in English Language Arts standards and mathematics standards. So with this data, and it's hard to see, I know from the audience, you can, you can find this on our website, you can also find this report on the Solano County website, but what you'll see from this is that even though female students are outperforming male students in these standards, these academic standards, we still have a long ways to go. So in the top graph there, you're going to see a red circle around the Fairfield-Sassoon School District, and that top number is that 65% of Travis female students meet English Language Arts standards. That means 35% don't. That's the highest of all school districts for the English Language Arts, so that's an example of where we have a lot of improvement to go. And then 53% of female students in Venetia School District actually meet the mathematics. So, you know, we've got work to do for educating our young people. I will say, even though the focus on female equity and making sure that women's well-being is attended to and invested in, that this gives me a lot of alarm for our boys. Our boys need to be successful, and they're falling behind academically. If you move to the next slide, you'll see that in terms of graduation rates, female students are 34% more likely to graduate than our boys, and they're 27% more likely to meet both a UC and CSU requirements. Even females with an identified disability are 8% more likely than male students to graduate high school. So again, doing better, but we still have improvement overall in our educational. So, crime, the next slide, crime against women and girls. So the crime that I, the data that I'm going to share with you all is from 2018. It was collected from all of the police departments and from Solano County Sheriff's Office, so I just want to call out a big thanks to the Fairfield Police Department for gathering that data and sharing that data with us. A little bit of caveats or qualifications I want to add here. First of all, that the different jurisdictions actually have kind of different reporting practices. One of the things I learned, and it wasn't reported about the city of Fairfield, but that some of them actually will use incident reports or computer aided dispatch reports instead of actual crime reports, and those two things, the CAD reports and incident reports, are not reflected in this data. So it's an underrepresentation of some of the crimes that are committed against females. The other thing that to think about is that we heard from experts who actually work in the field of domestic violence or assault against females, and there is a, there was a dramatic drop in terms of the reports and accessing services from females, particularly from the Latino population. But as we move into this as well, the, if you look at the data, members, key members and prominent members of the Asian Pacific Islander, largely the Filipino community, indicated that they, as a culture, tend not to report domestic violence incidents, and so that's probably also an under-reporting. So as we go on to the next slide, I just wanted to give you all those caveats, because this is really not a real picture, but it is what we have. So in terms of the total crimes against females by, by city, there were 3,057 crimes committed against females in 2018, with Vallejo, Fairfield, and Sassoon City experiencing the largest volumes of crimes. When we break down in the next slide, you'll see that although Sassoon is pretty high up there, we started looking at more of the violent crimes that were committed against females, and they're not as highly represented in that, so. Looking at crimes against females by race and ethnicity, here's where the disproportionality comes in. So we know that African-American females are 14% of the population here in Solano County, and yet here, in terms of crimes, we're looking at, what is that number? Is it 29% as I'm looking at? So like 1/3. Again, if there's an under-reporting from Latino-Hispanic populations or from the Asian Pacific Islander, that might change that number a little bit, but right now, that means African-American females are disproportionately represented as victims of crime in Solano. Next slide. So we combined some penal codes here. It's broken out separately in the report, but we just wanted to kind of consolidate. There were 941 assault and battery crimes committed in 2018, and 1/3 of them were assault with a deadly weapon. You'll see there that, harder for me to see that far away. I want to get the right number, 253 of those assault and battery occurred here in Fairfield. On our next slide, we see that, and by the way, for the most part, you're going to see the same kind of data related to African-American females experiencing much higher rates of assault or battery or violent crimes committed against them. And there's just one place, when I get to that data on sexual assault, you'll see that that changes a little bit. But as far as domestic violence, there were 1,129 incidents of domestic violence. This is an under-reporting. The district attorney, Krishna Abrams, actually shared with me some data of the number of females who actually sought victim witness support, and it was higher than these numbers here. So that's another, a little bit of the reflection. You'll see that Fairfield is second in that with 293 domestic violence. Moving on to the next slide, and sexual assault. There were 319 sexual assaults committed against females, and this is just using, using these penal codes that you see up here. There are two penal codes in a separate slide that's around assault against a child who is 14 years and under, and that's not reflected in this data. But what you'll see here is that 2/3 of them were committed against a minor under the age of 17. To me, this is just catastrophic that we're having this. Granted, in this, these penal codes, one of the penal codes actually is around statutory rape, and we don't know how a lot of specifics about this. One of the other things for those, I'm looking at, at Councilmember Tim and the law enforcement officers in here, what we looked at was the primary code, and we did not look at secondary codes, so those aren't captured actually in this data. In this particular case, you're going to see that majority of sexual assault occurred in Fairfield. So that was an interesting flip. Fairfield was always the second in crimes, and now it's the highest. And in this case, it was the white and Hispanic females that experienced higher levels of sexual assault. Next slide. Now what we wanted to do was just kind of break this out by age, so we could really understand what we're talking about. We're talking about children. The first slide up on the left, figure 33, that is a reflection of age broken down by the penal codes that were represented on the previous slide. The figure 34 on the upper right-hand corner, that's the number of incidents of sexual assault on a female child under age 14, and in that case, there were 131 crimes committed against girls under the age of 14 in 2018. Again, with Latina and white children comprising the majority in the sexual assault. I'll take a breath here for a second, because, you know, there was a quote, I'm going to, I'm going to mess it up, but the quote was something along the line, it was that statistics are just people with the tears removed. And I think that, as I'm seeing these numbers, sometimes we can get overwhelmed with the numbers, but we're actually talking about girls. We're talking about somebody's daughter. We're talking about somebody's wife, somebody's sister, somebody's grandchild, somebody's niece. So for me, this is just really catastrophic. It was very difficult for us to actually take a look at some of this data, particularly when you start breaking it down by crime. Moving on to disabilities, and you can go to the next slide. So, interestingly, the data on disabilities is in different locations, so what we have here for you is only on cognitive disabilities and from the North Bay Regional Center, and in that case, we had 1,250 females with cognitive disabilities with white females, representing 45% of those. As far as physical disabilities and other forms of disabilities, that's an area that we need to go and find, and find the data and collect and pull it together. So moving to the next slide on health and safety, and then on to health conditions. Next slide. So, we have higher rates of health issues here in Solano County compared to the Bay Area and to the state. We actually have 1/3 of females in Solano County have high blood pressure, 26% asthma, 10.7% diabetes, and almost 10% heart disease. And again, those are all higher than the Bay Area or state, so it's interesting. Be curious why that's occurring. We do have higher levels of poverty here, so social determinants of health might be a factor that's playing in this. If you look at the next slide, we also have much higher rates of breast cancer in Solano County compared to the state of California. And we have higher rates of accessing emergency departments due to the breast cancer, as well as hospitalizations, with African-American females representing the highest. And here's another place where there's some disproportionality in terms of the services and the need. Moving to the next slide in terms of maternal-child health. So overall, birth outcomes actually have a decline in babies born with low birth weight, but just taking a look at some of the data and areas to focus on, Latina, or excuse me, Asian and, excuse me, Latina and African-American females are least likely to access prenatal care in the first year, an area that we can focus on. There's some very positive gains, both for the mother and for the infant. And then Asian Pacific Islander and African-American females are more likely to deliver babies preterm in or with low birth weight. So again, we're seeing more disproportionals and inequities here. Moving on down to the next two slides, and post, prenatal, postnatal depression. We see that we have higher rates, females in Solano County have higher rates of prenatal and higher rates of postnatal depression, and nearly 30% of African-American moms experience prenatal depression. And again, if you just see that bar right there, that purple bar in the middle, that's just shocking, that so many of them experience this. 21.3% of them also experience postnatal depression, higher than any other group. We did take a look at suicide and attempted suicides on the next slide. We know that males are more successful in committing suicide, so in 2016, there were 39 suicides, male suicides compared to eight. However, if you take a look at the data of self-inflicted injury or suicide attempts and emergency department visits, you're going to see that females are 50, was it 57? 51, I can't see, sorry, this far, percent more than males, and 36% more likely to experience hospitalizations. Specifically, there's two bars there that are circled in red, and I know that the audience can't see this, but when we're talking about these numbers, in the bar furthest to the left, that's 62 girls ages 10 to 14 ended up in the emergency room because of attempted suicide, self-inflicted injuries. And then that next bar, purple bar over, that's 84 girls ages 15 to 19 ended up in the emergency department for attempted suicide. We obviously have a lot of work to do. So moving on to the next slide from health behaviors down to obesity and exercise, which there we go. Solano females are 12% more likely to be overweight compared to the Bay Area and the state, and 36% more likely to be obese. And interestingly, we exercise less regularly compared to those females. So we know that there is a link. It's not the only link between weight and, and exercise, so it's just something that we wanted to highlight there. So as far as our next steps, the commission, we've, you know, there's a lot of great data. I encourage people to go get a copy of that report, because there's a lot more than, than what was represented here. The commission has formed some work groups, and they're beginning to explore what the commission can do, both in terms of recommendation or public education and awareness, and some of the areas are around maternal health, human trafficking, and poverty, just to name a couple of them. So with that, if you have any questions and or comments?
Thank you for a very thorough and eye-opening report. Appreciate that very much, and your delivery of the material was awesome. Councilwoman Tim, question?
Yeah, I do. Rochelle, what happens with this report now?
Well, we've given presentations to the Board of Supervisors. We're giving presentations to all the city councils, to Seroptemus groups, given it to at least one Rotary, so Kevin, you're on the spot for those other Rotaries. But, but ultimately, the goal is to identify some metrics and begin to try to address and change those metrics, right? So how can we begin to advocate and, and make sure that Solano County is more equitable, that women and girls actually experience greater health, greater safety, greater well-being?
Well, that's, and that was my next question is, a lot of people put a lot of hard work into this, and I've seen too many studies get on a shelf, they get dusty. So what's the vehicle now that you need to continue to move this forward?
You know, I think to the place that each individual group actually will begin to identify a metric that they can tackle and begin to work on, that would be phenomenal, both in the nonprofit sector as well as government. The commission is filled with very passionate, dedicated women who are going to be fierce advocates, already are advocating, you know, on some level, I think we're going to have to have some policy change, right? So what about food stamps and food insecurity? You know, Solano County needs to do something to step that up and engage with people, so make, they're getting the resources that are available for them as one, as one example. But I think it depends on what the, the data is that you're looking at and what, what the strategies might be. So it's still premature from the commission's point of view. Come up with solid recommendations for you.
Okay, and this is Mr. Chatwin. Remember that we interviewed for this panel and the outstanding women that we didn't pick? You probably can see where I'm going with this, but the numbers are depressing, but if they're true numbers, which I believe, and I believe you, with, and probably in a lot of cases, they're under-reported. Yeah, I just want to make sure it doesn't sit on a shelf, so.
Thank you.
We'll make sure, we'll make sure that it doesn't.
Hope you keep it alive.
We'll chit chat. Rochelle, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rochelle.
Thank you so much.
Our next presenter has a very special place in my heart and in our hearts. It's our beloved Sean Quinn, our former city manager and interim city manager. Hi, Sean. He will be presenting for the Fairfield Community Services Foundation.
Well, first off, thank you. Nice to see everyone today. Appreciate being here. I'd like to also, I'm with the Fairfield Community Services Foundation, I'm one of the board directors, and I'd like to introduce two other board members who are here. You've actually heard from two of them already. It's Kevin Burke, who's in the back, Rotary also, but he's on our board, and Rochelle Sherlock, who just spoke, are two of our board members. Rochelle's our newest board member. Welcome aboard. Community Services Foundation has been around for 26 years. It's our 26th year. It was started basically via, created a public-private partnership between private foundation and the city of Fairfield, primarily to fund park and recreation programs, and to that extent, it's been very successful. In the 26 years that we've been in existence, we've invested about $2 million into, into the Fairfield community. Most of that money has gone to the city of Fairfield to fund park and recreation program. We are a volunteer board. We have no paid staff, and 100% of what we raise goes into our work. We're very proud of that. Also, our board members contribute. 100% of our board members contribute every year to our cause, and so we're very, very proud of that. But this year has been very different. 2020, as you all know, has thrown some curveballs at everyone, including the foundation, and so we've had to change what we've done, but we're proud of what we've been doing. For the first 25 years, our signature program was Fund and Run Program, which is a mobile recreation program that takes out, brings recreation into neighborhoods where their kids need to go out and get exercise and be involved. It's an award-winning program, and 25 years, we've helped fund that, ranging about $100,000 a year, the foundation has put into. a year, foundations put into the Fund on Run program. In 2019, there was a pause in the partnership between Fund on Run and the foundation. However, we're hopeful when COVID gets over that we can continue that partnership. And we've been in discussions with the manager and the park and recreation staff about continuing that partnership once these programs get going. And we're very excited about that opportunity. But when COVID hit, we decided as a foundation, we needed to do certain things. We knew we couldn't do our traditional fundraisers. We knew we couldn't do our traditional programs because those programs are no longer operating. We couldn't do dinners at senior center, couldn't fund Fund on the Run because it wasn't operating, couldn't help out with swim scholarships because the swim center was closed down. But we knew there was a great need in the community. And the board decided that they were going to step forward and start funding programs to help with the COVID response in Fairfield. And we knew we had to do that without being able to go out and do our traditional fundraiser. So we took money out of reserves to help do this. Our first effort was to provide $5,000 to Feed the Fight, which is a program that was put together by Roger Merrill and the Green Valley Lanners Association, where they went out and bought meals from local restaurants, the time with restaurants desperate to have business. And they bought over 2,000 meals, provided those meals to first responders, police, fire, medic ambulance, people to hospitals. And we provided 25% of their funding to get that program up and operating. And I want to congratulate Roger Merrill and the Green Valley Lanners Association for a great job on that. We're proud to be part of that. The next effort we decided is we knew that with shelter in place, that there's a lot of seniors who couldn't get out. And so we partnered with the Fairfield Main Street Association and the Solano Affordable Housing Foundation to provide hot meals to low-income seniors in senior manor. And we delivered 356 meals over five weeks to seniors. It's interesting, but we asked them what they wanted. They wanted Mexican, Thai, Indian, they wanted spicy stuff. So it's very funny. So we provided that. We bought all the, all the meals were bought in restaurants in the downtown, and it was a real partnership. And we're, and I'll get to it later, but actually that program's continuing. We called it Fairfield's Friday Night Supper. We made up flyers that each one of the restaurants have in their, in their business, and we used 18 different restaurant program data. We also, in partnership with Paradise Valley Estates, Kevin Burke represents, we had started a meal delivery program to St. Mark's Mono Food Pantry. They've been in business for a long time, providing food in the community, and we partnered with them to buy food and take it over to them, distribute it out to the community. They provide food every Tuesday from 3:00 to 5:00 at St. Mark's, then every other Wednesday, the first and third Wednesdays of the month for seniors. It's been a great program. Our first delivery was 560 pounds of ground beef, 570 pounds of chicken, 575 pounds of butter, and 285 dozen eggs. What we discovered when we, when they went to deliver it is they had 20-year-old refrigerators, didn't have enough storage space for all the food. And so the foundation provided a grant to them to buy two brand-new, energy-efficient refrigerators. And also, they had some funding for a freezer, and the foundation at Paradise Valley Estates worked with them to acquire a new freezer. So now they can store all their food there in brand-new, energy-efficient refrigerators and freezer. We also provided $1,000 to St. Stevens for their food distribution program, which was very successful. They distributed food and vacuum. We also got a call that Travis Air Force Base has a program called Phoenix Spark and made up these people who were involved in innovative type aspects at Travis. And they had outdated 3D printers, and they wanted 3D printers in order to do face masks for David Grant medical. And so we provided $1,700 towards that effort. Travis Credit Union provided $5,000, and the federal home loan bank board provided $5,000. Then we had a local resident who's involved with Travis who provided $1,100 towards that. And the city of Fairfield assisted us by actually buying those printers and, and I want to thank city manager for storing them in his conference rooms for a while till we could get them picked up. But a couple of weeks ago, the mayor and the city manager, myself, and a number of other people were out at Travis, see those 3D printers in action, making those face masks. Pretty fascinating. What I really like about this is that the airmen who are, and airmen and women who are involved in this program have committed to us that once they get caught up on making face masks, that what they'd really like to do is go out in the community and teach young kids about this technology. And we see that as really part of our mission and really excited about that, working on that stuff. And airmen and airwomen at the base were really excited about doing that. The, we also, we've traditionally done a backpack giveaway, part of the Fund on the Run. We've bought backpacks, stuff from school supplies, and then given the Fund on the Run staff to go out and distribute to the kids who are paying in Fund on the Run. We couldn't do this this year, obviously, because Fund on the Run's not going. And so we partnered with the city's Quality Life Task Force, Don, and Selena, and also the fire and police departments, so I want to thank the chiefs for that. And we had a backpack and face mask and hand sanitizer giveaway at Bethel Community Church. And Pastor Gilmore was phenomenal to work with and the volunteers at that church. If you ever need traffic control, they're really good at it. Did a great job. But what we were able to do is we handed out 724 backpacks full of school supplies, gave 700 child masks out, 1,900 adult masks, 1,000 bottles of hand sanitizer provided to families. We were supposed to start at 10 o'clock in the morning, it was going to run to 12:00. The line was so big on Tabor, it was blocking traffic. We opened it at 9:30. We ran out of everything by 11:15. Tells you what the demand is for. Also, crime prevention and fire prevention handed out fun items to the children in part of the drive-through. So it was a real, it was a real partnership. It was a great day. People were so appreciative of what they were getting. And even though people are doing schooling from home, there's still a need for school supplies and the backpacks, and they're very excited about it. We also provided a grant to the Travis Credit Union Foundation. You know, they've been very active with COVID and also with the fire relief in providing grants to communities. And so we provided $5,000 to them, and they agreed to match fund programs in Fairfield for that, moving ahead. Then we decided to apply for $15,000 in community development block grant funds to continue our senior meal programs, our food program at St. Mark's. And much to our surprise, the community development block grant committee recommended we get $70,000. First time we applied for 15 and got recommended 70, it was very nice. So the council reached, and so we're now continuing those programs. And so we are delivering 233 meals every other week to seniors at three low-income apartment complexes in town. We are using restaurants in the downtown and also on North Texas Street and West Texas Street, provide those meals. And we also have continued the food program at St. Mark's, and that will continue through May of 2021. And we're just going to be starting a program at the end of this month as part of that, where at senior manor, we'll actually be delivering groceries probably inherently impaired to them since they can't get out. We've been doing an assisted grad scholarship for years. The last couple of years, we've expanded it to include seven scholarships. And this last year, we did, gave out seven scholarships again. It was interesting because you couldn't interview the kids this year because of COVID, and so this was on paper. And so we gave out three $1,500 scholarships, and we gave out four $2,000 scholarships. And the four $2,000 scholarships were named after longtime board members who left the foundation, Boy McNotten, Nancy Hopkins, Nancy Meadows, and Dean Patterson. We were very pleased to offer those scholarships in their, their name. We have done a toy and coat drive for years. We give those coats, toys out to kids at Fun and Run sites. Any of you have participated in that? It's a really great event. And we noticed a few years ago, when we were giving out toys in December, that there were kids showing up, t-shirts with no jacket. And so we started a coats for kids program that's been very successful. We give coats out at the event last year. I think Councilman Tim, you were with me when we ran out of coats over at Pennsylvania Tabor in the rain. And, and so we're going to be doing it again this year. We're very excited about it, but we have to do it differently. And so this year, we're going to do drive-through toy and coat giveaway. We're going to start collecting toys and coats right before Thanksgiving at a variety of local businesses, including we'll have bins at city hall and at every fire department station down. And we'll be holding a one-day drop-off event at AC's on December 5th, people to donate the coat. We're in great need of coats this year. We have a lot of toys for young women ages of three to five. Other than that, a lot of toys also. So we'll be out collecting toys and probably buying. And we have a number of businesses that have contributed to us, and we're very excited about the event. And just found out today that we got a grant to Dow. In addition to providing coat, toys, we can buy bags of food at, provide probably 400 bags, that also funded by the Solano Community Foundation. This year, we're going to be doing a couple of other special things with Main Street and the Fairfield Chamber of Commerce. We're going to be doing a Thanksgiving meal at the seniors' complexes. Because it's Thanksgiving, we're going to be delivering it the day before, but we're actually going to do 253 meals. And this is made possible by a grant from Richard Wasson, Sean. Thank you, Greg. Appreciate that. And the seniors are extremely excited about doing this. And also, on November 21st, in conjunction with the Quality of Life Task, Bethel Community Church, we're going to be doing a food giveaway and mask giveaway. We're giving out 400 bags of groceries. When COVID-19 hopefully slows down, we look forward to continuing our partnerships with the city of Fairfield and getting back to doing some of the things we were funding before. But also, I think that we're very excited about some of the things we did this year, which were different for us, and we'd like to continue some of those. So I think you're going to see the foundation doing a number of different things as we forward a couple of years. This slide is 2019, and it shows you 2019, we provided almost $140,000 in funding to the city of Fairfield for a variety of senior and youth programs. And it wouldn't be possible without all our partners and sponsors. So I want to thank them. And I also want to thank again the Fairfield partnership, thank the manager for stepping up so supportive in our first meeting we had, and for allowing us to work with staff to get this done. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, thank you.
Sean, thank you so much. And the Community Services Foundation, this has really tonight been a demonstration of the power of this community. These are all volunteers, and this is much, much-needed work. So thank you again. Are there any questions from my councilman, Carl?
No questions. I just wanted to thank Sean because I know how much energy and heart he puts into this foundation, and everybody does. So once again, very comprehensive report, and thanks for all you do, Sean. We appreciate it.
It's a good board. Thank you.
Our final presentation this evening will be by Fire Marshal Stephen Conti for the Fire Prevention Week. Good evening, firefighters.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Bertone, City Manager Chatwin, council members, and all those in attendance. Took this, this month was, last month, excuse me, was National Preparedness Month, and this October annually is our Fire Prevention Week, which was last week themed Fire Safety in the Kitchen, which we were all in a commercial, and thank you for that. Bill, I felt it was a great time to reintroduce Fairfield Fire Department's Fire Prevention Bureau to everyone. Unfortunately, this year, we were unable to hold our open house due to our current health crisis, and our Fire Prevention Week again was, had to be canceled. And we look forward, hopefully, to holding it next year. With that said, our Fire Prevention Bureau promotes all of the modern-day resources available while ensuring we perform our state-mandated fire and life safety inspections, public education, vegetation management, and our daily goal of preventing fires and making our city a safer place to work, live, and visit. At this time, I'd like to introduce our all-star team. Senior Fire Inspector, Plans Examiner, Brian Just. Our new addition to our team, Fire Inspector Tyler Hayes. And last, but certainly not least, our Senior Fire Inspector Trent Heron. And we're just here to say that we ensure that we will continue to provide the highest level of customer service and life safety, day in and day out, to the community that we serve. And just want to say thank you very much for your support and appreciate your time. Thank you.
That concludes our presentations for this evening, and now we turn to public comments. Madam Clerk.
Persons wishing to address the city council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public. Ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request F to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. To speak on an agenda item, if you haven't already done so, please complete a speaker's card and give it to me. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to four minutes with one minute to summarize their remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first speaker this evening is Virginia Halsworth.
Hello.
Good evening.
Can I take my mask off here?
Yes, you may.
My, I'm here. So, I'm here to bring awareness to the beaver population that is here in Fairfield. For you guys that don't know, there's actually bears all in our waterways in Solano and in California all around. I have a copy of our routine maintenance agreement with Solano County, with Fairfield, and it says that beaver dams shall be maintained during periods of low to no flow. If beaver dams cannot be managed by notching to reduce the water level or the installation of pond levelers, then beaver dams shall be removed during the non-breeding season after the pups are old enough to move out of harm's way. The second section mentions beaver dam notching or modification shall only be conducted with hand tools after August 13th, which was done by a dam that was in, shaking, sorry, I'm not a very good public speaker. But that was done, there was a significant dam in the Laurel Creek area. I'm not sure what notching fails, but they did not use.
Virginia, you have one minute to conclude, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Anna Patero, please.
Good evening, members of the City Council. To answer your question, Councilmember Tim, what we've done with the commission is that since the report was comprised, completed, we've, we identified five of the top areas in that status report, and we've created working groups to figure out where, what we can do from now on, working with members of the community, with other groups that have been established so as to not duplicate what the city or the county is doing. That's where we're going from here. The reason why I'm here actually is to first congratulate our chief, new Chief Cantrell. Thank you. Welcome to our community. It's a great community. And this brings me to what I'm here for tonight. Just about a week ago, the City of Louisville, Kentucky settled a $12 million lawsuit with the Breonna Taylor family. $12 million. Three officers barged into her apartment and killed her, and is costing the City of Louisville $12 million, rather, not $12,000, $12 million. I don't want that to happen in our community. And I think we can start with Chief Cantrell. I was so thrilled to hear her statement when she said her experience as a little child is why she's, she decided to go into law enforcement. Every Wednesday afternoon from 5:00 to 7:00 at the corner of Business Center Drive in Green Valley, we're there protesting police violence. But so many people are not here today, and they can't vote. We have to vote, by the way, because of that. To bring awareness to police brutality. And so there's, there's, there's an officer that gets dispatched over there in the afternoons, and he sits, or she sits in the corner at Safeway. This would be a great teaching moment. So with our new chief here, I think it would be great to have community policing. And instead of sitting in the corner of Safeway, there are several children who come to these demonstrations. Maybe come and talk to the children. Talk about why they became law enforcement, why they became peace officers, to teach these young people why it's important to participate in their democracy. We were founded on dissent. I think these children are demonstrating that. So in order to alleviate having to pay millions of dollars because three or so, a few officers are errant, I think it's so important to, for the officers to get to know us. Start some community policing. I'd like to thank our peace officers here for their service. I'd like to thank you all, your families, for sharing you with us. I'd like to welcome Chief Cantrell and hope that we start some community policing. Whoever's out there at 5:00 in the afternoon on Wednesdays, come and talk to the kids. Tell them why you do what you do for a living, and maybe we can have more Chief Cantrels in the City of Fairfield. Welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Our next speaker is Emmy Rubio.
Hi, everybody. My name is Emmy. Love you, Ms. Anna, but please, please don't come and talk to the children. Thank you. Good evening, City Council, and more importantly, good evening to the citizens of Fairfield. My name is Emmy. On September 30th of this year, Deanna Cantrell assumed the position of our police chief. This decision greatly affects the safety of Fairfield and especially Black Indigenous people of color. Despite Deanna Cantrell's remarkable intro, Deanna Cantrell has made great mistakes in their time being San Luis Obispo's chief. So I can't imagine how low the bar, the bar is for Fairfield PD's hiring process. Do you remember Dustin Joseph? Dustin Joseph shot and killed Mario Rivera in Vallejo in 2012. The community was told about an investigation, but no follow-up. Dustin Joseph was also a part of badge bending, where officers bent a corner of their badge when they murdered someone. Fairfield officials, what are you going to do about this? How do you let things like these slip through the cracks? To the City of Fairfield and Deanna Cantrell specifically, what will you do about the effects of Vallejo's fatal 14 and Dustin Joseph here in our city? The community demands and deserves answers and results, Fairfield PD. Contrary to your Facebook and Instagram posts, we put the community, we put the unity in unity, not you. All you do has been putting fear into our community. And that also ties into them standing outside of Safeway or standing in the back near the library during the protest. There's usually three cars there, and it's a scare tactic, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jamari Al Bowie.
Hi, I'm Mari Bowie, and I'm here to formally request the City Council that you guys stop encampment cleanups. There's some precedence on our side in the Ninth Circuit, there's a court case, Cart Martin versus Boise, in which they declared that it's against the Eighth Amendment and its cruel and unusual punishment to clean up the houseless or move them away if you don't provide alternatives to them. Fairfield has a lack of shelters and housing for the houseless. The continuance of encampment cleanups is inhumane and quite frankly abhorrent. I have a friend who's houseless, and one of the people from either Heart of Fairfield or on the hit team took away his wheelchair. And he sits in a wheelchair. Two days later, I went to go check on him, I had to call the hospital because of the complications he's had because he's been forced to walk. He was hit by a car within the year. So he's, he's been having complications. Not only that, that's like the most extreme case, but it shouldn't have to be that extreme for y'all to care. They're taking away tents, they're taking away blankets, they're taking away cookware. Are they just supposed to sleep on the grass? Are they just, what are they supposed to do to keep warm when it's cold? It's about to start raining soon. They, we're dealing with fires still. The air quality is terrible, and then on top of that, you guys are cleaning up their stuff, and don't get me started. I know you guys say that there's a storage unit where you guys keep the evidence for up to 90 days. That's a lie. We've been calling the, like Fairfield Police Office for three weeks, no answer. At this point, we're just gonna have to pull up and like show up to see if you guys are actually tracking this, but there's no way, there's no formal tracking process. If you guys did keep their stuff and evidence, how would you even know it's theirs? How couldn't someone just come up and be like, this is my stuff? There's no actual formal process, and these people are being continually dehumanized, and it's disgusting. And I'm fed up, and I feel like we should definitely stop these encampment cleanups. It should be agendized because we're in the middle of a pandemic. You're not only risking the houses, but you're risking your own personnel for this. They're being treated less than human. And I know that y'all constantly refer to them as public health crisis. These are human beings, not rats. Like this isn't the plague. They're human beings. So with that being said, we are formally asking y'all to stop encampment cleanups, or at the very least, provide better alternatives. If you guys can't provide alternatives, you guys shouldn't be criminalizing them or punishing them for having nowhere to go if you guys can't put them somewhere. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mari. Don, can we follow up with Jamari Al after the, this meeting, please?
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
We have many openings at Bay Church. We can't fill it. It's a homeless shelter. And we can't fill it. So I'm not, I know, I know. And I don't want to get in a back and forth, but, but we have openings for a lot of people. The problem that we're finding is they don't want to go. The ones that want to go, and Jamari, as you very well know, the ones that call have been placed through our homeless department. But the ones that don't want to go are not going to be able to camp where they want to camp, especially when we have places for them to go. Because what we're finding is 100 or 150 homeless or houseless individuals are absolutely ruining the parks and the linear trail. I probably get 10 or 15 emails a week as well as everybody else, pardon me. If we could work together to get them placed, but if they don't want to go, then they need to go somewhere else. But we could, we'll have this conversation, but there are places for them, okay? I just want to make that clear to everybody that we're not ruthless, but there is a huge problem with, okay, hang on. We're not ruthless. If they want to cooperate, we'll cooperate. If they don't, then we'll do what we need to do.
Excuse me, excuse me, there's no speaking unless you're recognized.
And, and you're absolutely right.
So if you want to fill out a card and come on up and speak, you can do that, but there's no speaking from the audience. So go ahead and fill out a card real quick, or just come on up and say what you have to say on the mic.
And, and you are absolutely right, mental health is a problem, drug addiction is a problem. We have wraparound services, we have people there that will help them, but they have to go, they have to want to go. We can't force them. We're trying. Vice Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome. So Don, if you'll follow up with Mari, but ladies and gentlemen, this is a recalcitrant problem, an issue that we have not solved in this city, which is when we have beds, when we have resources, and some of our homeless residents, for whatever their reasons may be, do not want the resources. They want to stay in their encampment. They don't want to go to Bethel Community Church or to, you know, whatever the bed we have for them. What do we do about that? We have not solved that issue. We have not solved that problem. Yes, there are probably mental health issues involved. There may be some fear from having bad experience, prior experiences in other shelters, so they don't want to go back to a shelter situation. But what we have to do on this, on this dais, what we have to do is we have to figure that out, because that's why you put us up here. We haven't figured it out, but we need to figure it out, particularly in light of the fact that there is a pandemic. And so if we're taking somebody's wheelchair, or we're taking a tent and we don't have any place for them to go, what is going to be our response to that? And if we do have a place for them to go and they don't want to go, what is our response to that? We, this is not the forum right now to figure that out. They're very well-taken issues, and they're issues that we have yet to resolve. So Don, with that follow-up, we'll move forward. Okay, thank you. Our next public speaker is Edward Russell Jr.
Go get a how to violate someone's civil rights and get away with it. That's on me. So back in 1969, the Virginia Colonial Assembly enacted a law that authorized enslavers to kill enslaved people. Kind of sounds like City Council and the police. But anyway, history lesson. I was going to talk about that dude, but he's, that's why I got my back to him, they don't deserve my time. So my son will be just graduating to Tuskegee in about three days. Electrical engineering degree. Some white folks' kids in here is going to work for him. Then they're going to do what he says, how he says, when he says, he's going to pay them what he wants to pay them. That's the beauty when you own something. So Tuskegee, Tuskegee was founded and built by a black man, George Washington Carver. You can Google search that if you don't know, because you probably didn't bother to learn. When he was building it, white folks didn't want us selling the bricks. Go figure. So what'd he do? He built his own bricks, built his own school. Decided to teach ex-slaves, lifting the veil of ignorance. You can Google search that too. So understand that everything that has been put in place since that fake landing in 16, whenever it was, and we get a day out of school for that, imposter. There was some folks already here living a great life until white folks decided to come and ruin it. Then you didn't want to let us go to school, so we had to build our own schools. And so now that we're building our own schools, we got people that are owning our own business in that your white kids are going to work for us, basically is what I'm trying to say. And then as far as the police chief, there has to be a lie somewhere. Because if the city manager says that he interviewed faith leaders, well, most of the faith leaders I know, well, I heard about pastors, priests, Catholic priests, they prefer to rape little boys, but they condone and look down upon homosexuality. So if you really want me to believe that the faith leaders you talked to approved your new police chief, bruh, you're a liar. So with that, I will end, and I would just call for every single one of you, of you up there to resign because you're pathetic, you don't do nothing but push us out, put laws in place to hurt us. You haven't even, you haven't even brought none of these police officers to task, held their feet to the fire, held them accountable. All you do is just push us out, put laws in place to hurt us. You ain't did nothing to lift the city up. So just please resign and do us all a favor, because pretty much you're pathetic pieces of human.
Our final public speaker this evening is Cam Holzendorf.
Good evening, council. Everybody can hear me with my mask on, correct? Am I good? All right, cool. Cam Holzendorf, Cam with a K. All right. Good evening. First off, council, I would like you to recognize the death of a community member by the name of Jose Chipo Cortez. His life was taken last Saturday in the parking lot at Straw Hat Pizza. So I would like you guys to end the meeting on his honor right there. So you guys go ahead and do this. We did, I had some other points before you guys brought up the houseless incident, but I need to go ahead and address this for you. You guys keep on saying, let's get these out of the box ideas, out of the box ideas. I think we've probed that like 30 times in one of your meetings in the past. Some of you guys have been on this panel for over 10 years. When are you guys going to get out of the box and actually get some of these ideas out there? People, it's the same thing over and over again. You need to try to build relationships with them. Try going to the encampment. Don't just go visit the shelter, go where the source of the problem is. Use your leadership for power for the humanity of the people. Now I digress to my thing, because it's all about humanity here, and it starts with us leaderships. First off, I want to thank Police Chief Cantrell for being here. Thank you. And I want to go ahead and say thank you for taking on the duty of being our new Fairfield Police Chief. You have a hard job. You got to toe the line between the blue and humanity right now. It's a lot going on. And, you know, I need you to be your finest. You cannot drop below the line. When you put that uniform on, it's a standard. You cannot, you need to be the leader and set the, to set the record straight and be the one out there. Be the one public, showing people action, leadership, showing people how you can get along with the community. Attitude follows leadership. So if you go out and serve the community, protect and serve the community with an open heart, like a public servant, your police chief, your police crew will follow along with you. So please be the leader. Lead with a passion, lead with honor, lead with respect, lead with love. I know you can do this. Do not let me down. Do not let your community down. Do not let our community down. Do not let our kids down. Do not let Fairfield down. This is for you, City Council, next. How many of you guys believe that the Daily Republic is a credible news source? Any of you? Do you guys believe the Daily Republic? I know you have someone that is on the Daily Republic. Our biggest problem in Fairfield is that we don't communicate from city to community. Just like your statement, Mr. Tim, that you have a lot of openings for North Bay Church, but no one hears these things. Your website is so convoluted that no one can get there. You have town halls about houselessness that we've had to share. No one's getting this information from the city. Your constituents are angry because they don't know that we switched from city elections to district. But the Daily Republic read in the newspaper on Sunday, I don't know if this is true, this is all speculation at this point until we actually say something, whether it was blackmail or true necessity to sharpen representation within the City of Fairfield on November 3rd will hold the first district-based city council election.
Cam, you have 30 minutes to conclude, please.
I don't know what blackmail they're talking about. I hope it's nothing. And I hope you guys are really focused on representing the community with a strengthened And I hope you guys are really focused on representing the community with a strengthened source of representation. You guys need to lead with passion and love and consideration and honor, just like the police chief. We need to go ahead and be unified for a better Fairfield. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you, Cam. Can you step back to the mic for one second, please, and give me the gentleman's name who passed away, Jose, last name?
Jose Chipo Cortez.
Thank you. And we now turn to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk.
All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
Thank you. Item 10 will be removed from the consent calendar. Do we have any request to speak cards on the consent calendar? Madam Clerk?
No.
Okay.
Is that item 10?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second, and I guess we don't have to do a roll call vote today, so.
We do not.
Thank you. So, all in favor, please signify. Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Now we move on to new business, item 23. Resolution 2020 dash 20, sorry, 2020 dash 2004 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, allowing the City of Fairfield to hire Wade Brown as a part-time consultant as a PERS annuitant without a six-month break in service. And our presenter is Emily Coombs, Director of Finance.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. I'll be brief. After 20 years of service to the city, Wade Brown, our financial services manager over payroll, has retired. So prior to his retirement, we encountered some software malfunctions with our very old financial system that we plan on replacing, related to some FLSA or Fair Labor Standards Act payroll costs. Staff contacted the vendor, and we worked with them, and they tried to fix it several times. And after many tests, they were unsuccessful. So to correct these errors, we believe that the most cost-effective solution at this point in time is to hire Wade Brown back as a part-time PERS annuitant. He can also help us with labor negotiations that are coming up. Due to the urgency of this problem, we are requesting that we hire him without the six-month break in service. Because of this, CalPERS requires that we bring it forward to council for your consideration. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the City Council? Okay, so is there a motion to adopt the resolution? So moved by Councilman Vaccaro, seconded by Councilman Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Adopted the resolution unanimously. Next item is item number 24.
Item 24, citywide broadband plan and options. And our presenter is David Gasaway, Assistant City Manager, or Ron Puccinelli?
Both.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All right, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. David Gasaway, Assistant City Manager overseeing community and economic development. I'm only up here this evening to provide a brief introduction of the broadband master plan and the conference of past year in putting that plan together. Ron, our Chief Information Officer, will ultimately cover the details of the plan that was provided in your staff report. But I wanted to lead off just to highlight how this plan, or ultimately any decisions of City Council from the plan, tie in with some other major initiatives that you're working on. If you'll remember, last month, the council initiated an economic development strategic plan. There are efforts underway for a general plan update, the contract for which will be coming to your council meeting in November. And both of those are intricately linked to this broadband master plan. And so before I sort of finish up on that thought, I want to just provide some key statistics here. So in communities with affordable, high-speed internet, there is generally, or there is more than a 1% increase in per capita GDP locally. Home values in communities with affordable gig-speed internet have home values that are more than 3% higher than neighboring communities that do not have those speeds. Nationally, communities that have high-speed internet access have lower unemployment rates. They have higher rates of small business startup, entrepreneurism, as well as overall labor market competitiveness. Fiber, broadband fiber optics allows for smart city services that can lead to things such as connected traffic signals, which reduce congestion and greenhouse gas emissions. They improve infrastructure management, such as water and wastewater services, that can lead to less water waste, as well as lower water bills. And they improve first responder access to data and connectivity. Most importantly, resident access and social equity in communities that have affordable, high-speed internet have much, have been proven to have much greater outcomes. This is true with educational outcomes, as increasingly education, particularly as we're learning in COVID, is tied to internet access for homework and learning. Studies have shown that households that have high-speed, affordable, high-speed internet have on average $1,400 per year increases in their household income, as well as healthcare affordability, as increasingly healthcare providers are turning to telehealth and telemedicine. And a recent study actually found that some primary healthcare providers have reduced costs for that primary care by upwards of 70% through telehealth and telemedicine. So readily available, low-cost, high-speed internet ultimately is a core of what we are going to be bringing forward as our economic development strategic plan. And Ron will give you some greater details on how we may be able to go about that and some of the factors that are involved in that. We're not looking for any decisions from you tonight. This is too big a topic. There's too many variables. There's lots of information for you and the public to really consume here over the next few months. Ultimately, we just wanted to introduce this topic to you tonight, and we will be bringing it back for greater conversation likely at your retreat, when there is a new seven-member council seated, and have a much more in-depth conversation about all of the options that are available to City Council if you are interested in proceeding with a broadband master plan. It is intricately linked with economic outcomes for the future of Fairfield. Decades ago, the city made a smart investment in water and wastewater services that have led to food and beverage manufacturing clusters, that have led to jobs, and broadband and high-speed internet in the 21st century is critical to those types of outcomes in the decades to come. With that, I'll turn it over to Ron to give you some of the details, and we would be available for any comments after.
Thank you, David. Let me just grab my presentation here. I will try and be as brief as I can, and please, if anything, questions arise, do not hesitate to interrupt me. I want to just cover these six points real quickly. The idea for a citywide broadband master plan came out of our planning process that we started, as David mentioned, about a year, a little over a year ago, for preparing for the 5G cellular network deployments and things like that. And in doing the research around how we can help make Fairfield attractive for those kinds of investments, the opportunity for a citywide broadband plan came up. Some of the contributing factors to that, as David has already touched on, is right now we have very limited options, essentially two. This is also a major component of economic development by making Fairfield attractive for those knowledge-based, intellectual property-based businesses that, you know, Google and Facebook and those kind of companies like to acquire, as well as they have high-paying jobs. And we also want to use this to help address the digital divide that is so prevalent in many parts of our country. We also believe this establishes a nexus that is required to be able to put these kinds of building projects, network building project requirements into our development agreements. Without a nexus, there, we don't really have a vehicle to do that. To help us with all of this, as well as the 5G planning process and ordinance development, we engaged Magellan Advisors. And Magellan has been around for a while. As you can see, they've done several hundred of these kinds of studies and these kinds of plans. In our immediate area, they've worked with the city of Sacramento, San Joaquin County, and approximately 30 other cities in the Bay Area. So these folks actually know what they're doing. But why does this matter? Well, much like water, telephone, electricity is important for businesses and for humans to live these days, and streets. High-speed broadband network is sort of the, if I can use that word, the digital streets that is required to connect all of us with our cellphones, with our favorite applications. Businesses use it for research, development, product and service delivery. So by having a lack of broadband capacity here, we're sort of not connected to the rest of the world. And quite honestly, isolation is not really an option any further. We wouldn't build out a major neighborhood without putting streets and water and things like that in it. So why does this really matter? This is essential for things like municipal operations. We can, we can drive cost out of our existing municipal processes. We can drive friction out of our existing municipal processes, make it faster, make it possible to deliver services we couldn't deliver before. This also increases the value of the public assets, the streetlights that line our streets. We have several hundred of those. Through having broadband available in the public right-of-way, now each of those light poles becomes a vertical asset that is attractive to carriers deploying 5G, deploying other cellular features. And that then becomes from just a passive light pole to actually a revenue generator for us. And by combining the revenue generation, the cost reduction, and the fact that all of this will attract and retain the right kinds of businesses for us, generates sustainable growth for the city. So, how are we sitting right now? So on the map in front of you, you can see some very small pieces up in the top here, little chunks down here. This is our current fiber and conduit capacity that we have in place. In order to deliver something that is actually meaningful, is actually useful, that makes Fairfield attractive to the carrier investment community, our initial thoughts are that we would need something that looks more like this. And this was put together conceptually. This isn't a final design by any means, but it's the conceptual layout for how this could look, based on a couple of criteria. First of all, we want to make sure we connect city facilities as well as our business communities. So you'll notice that the major business areas, and we used our business license database to define these, are part of what's covered here, as well as covering the entire city. We don't want to leave certain communities out. So again, the idea is to help improve city operations, and it's already been touched on, improve our traffic management, enhance the economic value of our assets, turn them from passive assets into revenue-generating assets, and help make Fairfield more attractive for companies to come and invest their hard-earned money in and to help improve our quality of life. And as David also mentioned, this does lay the foundation for smart city. What is smart city? It means lots of things to many different people. It's something like your car talking to the streetlight. It could be your car talking to the vehicle next to it. It could be you driving down and your cellphone goes off because the pizza place has now got a two-for-one sale. Around lunchtime, and you're hungry. Those things, many, many, many different opportunities we have. In supporting an economic development plan, Fairfield has a really unique geographic location that I believe we can really capitalize on, and we can help drive more investment from companies. As you'll see in the map here, we're positioned approximately halfway between Sacramento and San Francisco. There's sort of the ends of the dog bone, if I can use that construct. And we're sitting right in the middle of that. We have, we have a very attractive cost of living, cost of housing to offer. We're on a major transportation corridors for rail, as well as highways. We're also proud of, and we have great agricultural area in our vicinity that contributes to our quality of life. We also have Travis Air Force Base as a major draw for the area. All of these things contribute to making Fairfield, again, very attractive organizations to come and invest. Some of these companies already are here, but they have chosen not to invest beyond simply passing through our borders. On the top-left map is the so-called long-distance carriers. There's approximately six of those that already have presence within our city limits. On the bottom-right are the so-called metro fiber that are delivering services to specific clients already within the city. And so with these combinations, as well as others that we were starting to talk to, we have potential investors existing, as well as others that are really anxious to come and work with us. Again, focusing on the community benefit. The economic development piece, in my opinion, can't be overstated. It becomes the magnet, and the broadband network is what is required to attract and retain those high-knowledge industry and high-paying jobs that most people are trying to get to, that frankly leave our community every day to go work in San Francisco or Sacramento. Touching on the resident access as well, we already mentioned trying to bridge the digital divide. In some places in our city, you cannot get high-speed broadband, broadband. It just, you can't get it, no matter how much you're willing to pay. In other places, you pay a lot and get very low speeds. So by having this kind of infrastructure in place, we can increase the competition, increase the number of options, and that will drive down the cost overall over time. So, please don't panic at the eye chart. The point of this screen is to show you that we have lots of options on how to do this. On the far left, we can go a very passive model and simply create the policies that invite and create the investment culture. And we can move through the continuum of options and get into more active models, where maybe we partner, maybe we build a piece of it, maybe we, you know, offer some other kinds of incentives. And this is the kind of thing that we'll be bringing forward to you in your workshop as we move forward in future considerations. Again, the idea is that we have lots of options. We don't have to do this all ourselves. We don't have to completely wait for somebody else to do it for us. That wraps up my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Any questions or comments? Councilman Tim?
Yeah, thank you. The Wall Street Journal is full of 5G and where it's going. And obviously, we've known about it now for at least a year, probably longer. We've been lobbied by major carriers. I guess my question is, is how long do you anticipate this process taking? COVID has shown a need. How many people work from home, especially professionals, that attorneys, doctors, architects, you name it? Or how about a second grader or a fifth grader on Zoom? That's probably more important now than anything. So I guess my question, well, my question is, what is your anticipation on the length of time? And perhaps it would go to either David Gasaway or our city manager. This is, this is very, very important.
Well, in terms of the details, you know, that ultimately is up to council, right? I think as Ron showed here on this chart, a lot of it is about how much city investment we want to make, what strategies we want to employ, and at what level we want to provide this service. You know, ultimately, what we're, what we're going to be advocating for as a staff is going to be looking at a more aggressive approach. But a more aggressive approach means, in effect, the city looking at a new utility, right? So just like we have a water utility, we're talking about a communications utility that the city would prop up. And there are various strategies. When we get into the details of that conversation, we'll bring Magellan into that conversation, because they are the experts, and having done this in other communities. But ultimately, this is something that, long-term, can be a revenue generator for the city. How fast we can get there ultimately depends on how much investment the city wants to make upfront, which investment for long-term return equals some risk in the short term, right? And ultimately, that's a conversation for council to have. You know, best-case scenario, though, in terms of our conversations, and Ron can correct me where I'm wrong, we're realistically, you know, if council said go today at the level of investment staff recommends, you're probably two years out before we would have the robustness of a network. And that would be, I mean, that's a challenging timeframe, right? We have a very big city, lots of distance to cover, and lots of gaps between connection areas. And, you know, modifying our capital improvement plan, looking at what those costs are, and trying to line it out to do this as quickly as possible in the most cost-effective way is no small undertaking. But it is, you know, a valuable thing that, long-term, could really improve quality of life for residents, be attractive for businesses, as well as reduce cost of city service.
Yeah, no argument. I guess I'll save the other technical questions and stuff for the workshop. Yeah, the quicker the better. This has obviously been around for a while, been in other large cities. So, thank you, and we'll just, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Vaccaro?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, Councilman Tim mentioned the schools. And I think, you know, right now, because blended learning is not going away. I mean, it might be a situation where, you know, students do go back into the classrooms at some point, you know, probably, hopefully soon. But the blended learning model is going to stay. But we need the broadband, you know, especially for our kids. And also for our people, the workers that are home. Because that's not going to change either. I've talked to so many people that are working from home whose companies have said, this is it. You're going to be working from home from now on, no matter when COVID ends. Because it's, you know, it saves money, and also you can get the same amount of work done. Because it saves money, and also you can get the same amount of work done, and less traffic on the road, climate change, everything else. But yeah, with the schools, I think it's going to be really important because we, like I said, it's not going away. If anything, it's going to increase the whole blended learning process, so I think we should move forward as fast as we can.
Thank you, gentlemen. Do we have any more comments? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, for a great report. We don't have any action required on that item, so we move to item number 25. Item 25, Continued City Council Workshop: Heart of Fairfield Gateways and Branding Study. And our presenter is Planner Brian Miller.
Actually, it'll be, I'll introduce this one again. David Gasaway, Assistant City Manager. So if you remember back in September, we brought forward with our consulting team, Melton Design and New Group, who are both here tonight as well, and presented some concepts for gateways and branding for signage related to Heart of Fairfield. At that workshop, council discussed what they liked and what they did not like in relation to the concepts they saw, and asked us ultimately to come back with a second look, which we're here tonight. And we heard you loud and clear. Certainly, the windmill did not come across as popular. So we're here tonight to provide you an updated conceptual design in a more option-oriented way. And what we're really looking for is for that feedback from council on things you like, or if there's anything that you absolutely don't like. What we will not present again tonight are going to be the aspects that there was not comment. There was quite a bit of location conversation, there was landscaping conversation, there were some general structures presented such as vertical signage, overpasses, asymmetrical sign shapes, et cetera. And we're not going to go into those unless that is something that council wants to bring, but we don't have that planned within the presentation. Instead, our hope is that we will provide you with some options for branding and style that resonates and can help us to move forward with this process. Before I turn it over to the consulting group and staff, I do want to provide a bit of framing in terms of this conversation. I've been here with the city about six months now. When I first got involved in this a few months back, and when we came in September, it dawned on us that we had admittedly allowed a little bit of scope creep into the project. We were looking at branding and signage sort of at a citywide basis. And I want to really try to wrangle in tonight the concept that what we're looking at is Heart of Fairfield. This is a Heart of Fairfield initiative. This was implementation under the Heart of Fairfield. This was one of those strategic items that we brought forward. And so as you're thinking about signage, as you're thinking about that brand identity, please be thinking about downtown. And I don't particularly mean downtown as it exists today, but the vision of downtown that you all foresaw with the Heart of Fairfield plan, and what the brand identity of that downtown can be, and how that may help to reinforce that sense of place. Just by a way of a couple of examples that resonate with me, you know, the iHeart New York logo is a brand identity that people can connect with. The Golden Gate Bridge is connected intrinsically with San Francisco in logos and in various ways. Corporate brands use, you know, the Mickey Mouse silhouette with Disney, the golden arches for McDonald's. And it's that type of brand identity that we're trying to create for downtown through the Heart of Fairfield plan. The expectation is not that this branding and signage in and of itself will turn downtown around, or that this branding and signage will in and of itself attract people to downtown. It's simply one of the many intricate and nuanced necessary pieces that go into successfully making that type of place. And with that, I'll turn it over to Brian Miller and the consulting team, and we'll take it from there.
Thank you, David. I think he's given a very good introduction to what we're trying to do tonight. As he indicated, what we're trying to do is basically bring some options, some choices for the branding language, the signage language. And with that, I will introduce Greg Melton and Howard Curtis of the New Group and Melton Design Group, and they will run through the presentation with you. And hopefully, we can get some good input and actually move toward completing this project and bringing a package that can lead to construction in the future. I can drive the S.
Jump right in. I'll go through this fairly quickly, and then we revisit any questions that you have. So the focus is Heart of Fairfield. The architecture itself of the signage has been agreed upon, it sounds like, and what we're really looking forward to is some feedback on the aesthetics, because we built in some componentry that would allow there to be special color or pictograms or illustrations that would help kind of round out the sign program. The goal of this conversation this evening is really to just present these three directions and the content that's applied to it. The content is schematic, so what we're showing isn't final, but again, looking for feedback. And we want to also show the signage itself because we want to keep in mind that it does get applied to the signage. So our first option is about the overall Fairfield themes that we originally presented. We had this idea that the signs themselves, when you encountered one of them, they presented some look and feel that represented the holistic community of Fairfield. So it engaged with different elements, and it was really looked upon, the logo as kind of a way to at least plant the seed and look and see what was going on with the city logo. And then from there, we created these derivatives. So agriculture, outdoors, family, industry, business, and then, of course, this fifth element would be the heart itself. The theme and the icon, or the themes, use an icon, and then this background imagery that's also with the coloring. And all of that comes into play when it comes to the wayfinding as well. The hope is that we can represent specific characteristics of the community so that they're integrated into each one of these signs, create something that's unique and different at each location. So this first example here is something where we've looked at the flyway. Can we engage that and bring that into the element? This is the asymmetrical gate, so it's really a horizontal element that houses the Fairfield message. And then it's meant to span a longer or wider thoroughfare. So this other object on the other side is really just the vertical element that creates kind of a bookended approach and creates thresholds. Where there is space, we don't have that real estate of the smaller footprint. We have our vertical element that's an interpretation of what horizontal is in a smaller footprint. So these two, I'm sorry, but could you just return? So the elements here, you can see they would be in different locations, but they have different imagery to them so that they become unique, so they have a, like a landmarking type of effect to them. We're also taking advantage of the overpasses as you pass through, one on the Webster Underpass on Highway 12, and then the underpass on I-80 that eventually transitions into West Texas, simple messaging. And then kind of the marquee point is this envisioned archway that would occur at the western edge of the downtown district, or the kind of the formal downtown. We have this archway. We recognize that there is an established archway in place, but we don't really want to compete with it, but we want to be able to make this as more of a Heart of Fairfield Second option is to just strictly go with Heart of Fairfield. So there's no attempt to pull in imagery from different parts of Fairfield itself, but really just focus on Heart of Fairfield. So the blue comes from the downtown colors of the street fixtures and that sort of thing, that blue. There's also some signage that's in place. And it utilizes more of imagery of either historic nature, or we could find images that really associate with the downtown so that the picturals make sense, that they all tie in together, that they're relevant. You could see here the examples of them, that color palette and that imagery being applied across the board from the asymmetrical, the vertical elements, and then as well as, I just bring a little bit of the color into the overpass. Again, all schematic. And then, of course, the last one is the archway. This one, there is even the opportunity to, if we chose that the heart made sense, that it was an icon that resonated with you, then there's even some of the playfulness of bringing it into the structure. You could see that abstracted heart. And then the third option is really a blending of the two, where we want to be able to look at the general imagery of Fairfield and look at all the different components that make up this community, but also then create this little identification that can be applied to the wayfinding devices so that you can, as you pass one of the markers, you'd also see this logo that would start to identify where the destinations were within the Heart of Fairfield. This logo also could manifest itself in all sorts of different things, whether or not it's marketing collateral or integrated into things like street furniture, the trashcans, or the seat. So there's a lot of flexibility with the idea of being able to perhaps create a little icon and then use that different component. It gets very scalable. So you could see here that the signage is essentially similar to the first one as far as the approach of having, speaking to a broader audience. But then as you pass this sign, what we're envisioning is then we'd have a kind of a follow-up sign that becomes more of the Heart of Fairfield wayfinding program. It would start to point out destinations. So this speaks to more about getting people moving or understanding where an interesting destination is, whether or not it's a park for outdoor activities, or theater, or just downtown shopping, or what have you. So that's that idea. And then back to the, kind of these gateways again, is the idea of just having the overall imagery play into it. So, you know, this concept is really about trying to do both, right? It's focusing on Fairfield as community, but also then trying to engage that idea of what is the Heart of Fairfield, where are those, finding boundaries, and then what's available within the Heart of Fairfield. This becomes the marquee, if you will, it's the archway, but you see now that we're trying to introduce the brand element into it. It says downtown Fairfield, it could say Heart of Fairfield. It's open to interpretation of what that exactly would say. But again, we're trying to create that, kind of that formal passing into the downtown And then this slide is just all of them, so you could digest them all and take a look without having to flip around, and you can see all three options there. Again, the first one is just strictly themes, where we have five themes that include the Heart of Fairfield. The second option is, Heart of Fairfield is just represented across the board, and the blue color comes from the downtown fixtures. Then that third option is using both, where we get to have the graphics play out as we would in option one, but then offering that ability to create some smaller lollipop signs or things that are branded so that brand can exist and expand.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the report. Appreciate it. Council members, any comments or questions? Councilman Vaccaro.
I mean, I like option three. The only thing is with the little heart there, I wonder how that's going to work, you know? That's my own. I mean, I like the concept, but I just don't want it to look, for lack of a better word, cheap. You know what I mean? And that's kind of the way, I could see that maybe happening unless it's done right. But I like the diversity of option three. I don't like option two. So between one and three, but I like three a little better. I like the gateway. But I'm a little concerned about the heart signs, just, you know, how that would look.
And I should clarify that the heart is really a, we're showing it as a vehicle to create this conversation and say, okay, we get it, we like the idea of what you're trying to do to create that brand. Just let's either be, you know, the feedback that's welcome is, let's be less literal, or let's be more literal, you know? Whatever you feel that best represents what the Heart of Fairfield would be.
If I might interject, the heart logo itself, that's a matter of material selection, I think. And you can do it in a manner that's not cheap. You can do it with higher-quality materials. And so I think we can resolve that issue definitely if you like the overall concept.
Right. Yeah, no, I understand that. I'm just, that's what I'm saying. I wouldn't want it to look cheap, because if we're going to do a heart, and you know, I've been pushing this Heart of Fairfield plan as far as the timeline for a while there. And so if we're going to do this, to me, we got to do it right, and we really have to put our energy into it. That's why I use the word, I shouldn't have said the word cheap, but I don't know what else to say. You know, I just don't want it to look like that. If we're going to try to, you know, revitalize our downtown, which we can do, it's really got to be strong. You know, it's got to come on strong. People want to go down, families want to go downtown, bring their kids down, bring their grandkids down.
Thank you. Councilman Tim.
Yeah, I actually agree with Rick in that I like option three. And I'm not so opposed to the heart if it was only in one certain location downtown. What I really like is the reference to the planes, Travis Air Force Base, Travis is here, Flyway, hopefully the Flyway Center comes, slow, but I like the variety. And I like spheres, I don't know what you call the monuments, heck of a lot better than what was offered before. You got the idea. I agree with the color. And I think you pretty much captured it. Especially the conversation we had earlier tonight, I think it'll all, it'll all come together, but I do, I like.
Thank you. And I, if I had to choose one of these options, I guess three would be the choice. I do not like the hearts. But I want to just be, I just want to, you know, I'm frank, so I'm just going to tell you what I think. I don't see a Fairfield sign here that's more attractive than the one we have downtown. The one that we have downtown is beautiful, and that is Fairfield. So I would recommend, and this is just, you know, just my opinion, but I would recommend showing us something with the main component of the branding effort with that sign or something like that, and then with the different venue, you know, the Travis Air Force Base, the Flyway Center, something like that. But nothing that I'm looking at here is as drawing to this community as that downtown Fairfield sign. And that's not going to go away. And we're going to refurbish it and make all the lights work, and it's beautiful when it's 100% functional. So that's just, that's my opinion. I like the diversity of the different locations, but these signs don't evoke a drawing sense that a brand, a brand makes you want to pick it up. It makes you want to go there. It makes you want to stop and take a second look. I remember when I first saw Method Soap. I didn't know what Method was, never used the product, but the branding was so perfect that I just had to pick one up, and I've been using it ever since, right? So that's what I'm looking for from this branding effort, something that really makes you say, wow, that's nice. And I think that our downtown Fairfield sign beats all of these right now. So I would, so my feedback is I would love to see some branding effort using our using our, you know, and not to say exclude this, but my input is using the Fairfield sign, which everybody knows, that sign, how old, how old is that sign? Anybody know? Ninety? Nine zero?
It's nineteen.
Oh, we can't throw that brand out. That's 90 years' worth of goodwill put into that thing, right? So I'd like to see something with the Fairfield downtown sign in lights, like Broadway. And then with the different destinations, but I do not like the heart, because it looks like love. It looks like that, you know? And so I don't know that people would associate that with, um, the heart of Fairfield plan. And then the plane kind of reminds me of, like, taking off from an airport. So anything that you could do to make the plane look more like a military plane, something that would come out of Travis, I don't, you know, I don't know how that would work, but if, if it could somehow have a more, you know, military-type, um, feel to it, that would be great.
Madam Vice Mayor.
Uh.
And this is to Brian, and, and what the Vice Mayor said is, yeah, I understand the downtown Fairfield sign will move. Where would?
I just, I, I do want to, um, within the concept, and it was discussed, um, sort of, I think, at a high level in passing, uh, last time, we wouldn't actually be proposing that the existing downtown, um, archway be removed. This is actually, this, uh, this new archway would simply be on the other end, sort of bookending that historical sign.
That was, and that was my question. Uh, trying to look at the map, it's hard to tell. It's down West Texas Fifth Area, perhaps, or?
Uh, yeah, so, um, so I think that, uh, the existing sign is, is, is down here, um, and this one would be down sort of on that other end of that, you know, um, quote-unquote downtown, uh, as you, as you cross Pennsylvania coming down Texas, um, and, and really the, sort of the entryway signage as you come into downtown, um, and, and then the existing historical sign would be down there in that core of that downtown, and it would stay and, and, uh, still be a part of the, the overall theme.
Okay. And, and what I would say then is, it's only a couple blocks away. Sometimes less is more, and I'm not really sure that you would even need that sign down in 1100 block, 1200 block of Texas, where everybody knows that sign has been there since the early 1900s. Sometimes one is enough.
Can I, can I just, I want to add something to what, uh, Councilmember Tim said, if, if that's okay?
Yes, sir. Please proceed.
Just from a marketing perspective, uh, I think you're right. One is enough. Uh, the, the, the current Fairfield sign is iconic, and it's historic. Um, and, and I don't think you want to compete with it, and I think that's one of the things that you were talking about, is that if you do other archways, you want to be careful not to try and replicate something that's iconic. There's only one of those, and that's something that you want people to continue to take pictures of and identify. These other things should almost point towards that, uh, towards that area that is right in that center of downtown. But if you try to replicate that or, or compete with it, uh, it's like trying to compete with the Eiffel Tower with another type of tower similar, or something like that. That's your icon. Things should draw attention to that. And so whether or not you do another archway, I don't know if that's a discussion, but I think that's worth a discussion to have. Well, what is that archway going to look like if you do that?
Yeah. I might note, though, if I can, if I may, um, the new archway is actually farther away than you might think from looking at a map. I mean, the existing Fairfield sign, as, as visible as it is as you approach the core of downtown, is not a really large sign. And the consultant team and staff thought that it was important also to monument the true entrance to downtown, and that's why we proposed an arch at this Great Jones slash Pennsylvania Avenue area. I mean, that was kind of the rationale behind it.
I guess my last comment is, I understand, Mr. City Manager, what you're saying. I, I just think that I, I, I would like to see, if possible, you know, if we're going to have another archway and other branding opportunities, um, the incorporation, it, it is iconic, and I'm not saying to replicate it, but to use it for branding purposes. I mean, Mickey Mouse is on everything, right? He's replicated all over the world, and so is the NFL trademark, and et cetera. I mean, that's what trademarks do, right? So, it, so if that's possible, um, I, I, I would love to just see how that looks. I, I would just like to see how, what kind of, what kind of ambiance that, that would create, because that sign goes a really, really long way, and people seeing that from the highway, they know that's Fairfield, because the sign's been there 90 years, and we haven't been. So, um, so, yeah, I, I, that's my input. Any other input? Yes, sir.
So you're saying, take, take elements of that, incorporate it, yeah?
Yes, sir.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yes, sir. That's exactly what I'm saying. Councilman Vaccaro.
Yeah, thank you. The last thing I was going to say, and I appreciate what you said, uh, Madam Vice Mayor, because you brought out the historical perspective of Fairfield. I mean, we're the county seat, right? And, yeah, we have that sign, and I agree with the branding part of that. If we could use that image in other places downtown, because it is such a fabulous image, right? So, you know, why, why replace it with a, I'm not talking about replacing the sign, I'm just saying, using that image as, in different parts of downtown, because that's what people recognize. When I first came to Fairfield, like, 40 years ago, that was there. I remember going downtown, and then it's still there. Yes, you know, hope, hopefully, it's going to be there another 90 years. But no, I, I, I like the fact that you brought up, because it is an historical perspective of what Fairfield is and what it should move ahead to be, so. The last thing I was going to say.
And, and it's, and it's nice on the eye. It's a very attract, whoever did that got it right the first time. So, yeah, it's, uh, it's, it's really a beautiful piece of art. Any more comments or questions? Okay, thank you so much, very much. Look forward to seeing you again. And we don't have any action to take on that item other than input, so we now move to public hearings. Item 26 has been removed from the agenda this evening. Mr. City Attorney, would you like to discuss that?
I do. So, uh, we'll, we'll need to, uh, put this over until the 17th of November, because we don't have four people to pass urgency ordinance. So the action here, Vice Mayor, would be to first open up the hearing.
I open up the hearing on, public hearing on item 26.
Then the next action here would be, uh, with the concurrence of the council, for you to continue this item until November 17th.
Do we need a motion for that? So moved by Councilman Vaccaro, seconded by Councilman Tim. All in favor? Passes unanimously?
That takes care of it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on to public hearing, item number 27.
Public hearing and first reading introduction of ordinance 2020-20 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, amending various sections of Chapter 25. Article 1 of the Fairfield City Code, also known as the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairfield, amending the definition of boarding house, amending the development standards for boarding houses, amending the land use tables permitting boarding house small in all residential zoning districts, conditionally permitting boarding house large in the RM, RH, and RVH zoning districts, conditionally permitting boarding houses small and boarding houses large in the CN, I don't know what these stand for, so I'll just, CN, CO, CT, CC, and CM zoning districts, permitting boarding houses small in the HO, HR, and HWT zoning districts, and permitting boarding houses large in the HWT and HTD, TD zoning districts. And again, our presenter is Brian Miller.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ma- Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, excuse me, and members of the council. Um, the issue before you tonight is, to a degree, facing a degree of reality. Currently, our zoning ordinance is not permissive at all to, to boarding houses, but we all know that they exist in the city. Boarding houses are a form of housing, basically, in which tenants share a residential unit. Um, so it's typically a single-family home that's been converted, or is, is even hasn't a resident occupant owner who, who rents rooms to ver- to, to individuals or households for more affordable rent than you can typically get in the, um, commercial market. The current ordinance, as I mentioned, is very restrictive. Anything over three or more separate households, and that could be individuals, or it can be, for example, a mother with a ch- a single mother with a child, um, is considered a boarding house under our, our zoning ordinance. Examples include fraternity or sorority houses, housing for migrant farmworkers, residential motels and hotels, and supportive and transitional housing tendencies, such as for special needs populations, um, that are also receiving services at the boarding houses. Typically, they have one common kitchen facility. They are not currently licensed by the state. The zoning ordinance defines facilities licensed by the state under a different land use, and there are different regulations, um, that, that govern those kinds of facilities. Were they permitted? Um, permitted through conditional use permits in the higher-density zoning districts. They are not permitted, however, in our existing single-family zoning districts. However, we are all aware that there are boarding houses spread throughout the city, um, and our goal, again, is to address this. Our goal is to reconcile the need, which we all recognize, for affordable and special needs housing with neighborhood concerns, while legalizing and registering the existing unpermitted boarding houses that are in the city. There's currently no process for making an existing illegal boarding house, bringing that into conformance with city code, having an understanding of where they are, being able to really track where, the concentration of them. So our goal is to kind of bring these, bring these boarding houses into the light, so to speak. Some components, small versus large, um, definition of appropriate zoning districts, some objective standards, and a ministerial process for approving the smaller boarding houses, while continuing to rely on the conditional use permit process for larger boarding houses in where appropriate. We're, we're recommending creating two classes. Small would be three to six households. Large would be seven or more separate households. I might point out that if a homeowner is renting to one or two households or one or two individuals, they are not considered a boarding house under, and they will continue to not be considered a boarding house under our proposed ordinance. Requirements: All life safety and building code requirements will have to be met. Um, separation, we're recommending a 300-foot separation, which is similar to what is required for the state-registered adult community care facilities and adult residential care facilities. They have a state license, and they cannot be located on the same block. Our goal is to not have an over-concentration of these facilities. Parking, one space per household, unless it's a, unless it's a population being served or, or housed that does not own a vehicle or have a driver's license, then we're recommending an option that we can waive that parking requirement. The approval process, um, zoning clearance for the small boarding houses, um, for large boarding houses, zoning clearance or a conditional use permit, depending on what zone it is, um, these will all be exempt from CEQA review and California Environmental Quality Act review. Our recommended action is to approve the 2020 boarding house ordinance, and I can answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the report. Counsel, would you like to hold questions and comments until we close the public hearing, or do it now? No comments or questions? Okay. I will open the public hearing. I have no request to speak cards. If anyone wishes to speak on this item, please indicate that right now. Seeing no one coming forth, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back for council action. Yes, sir.
Do you need two different, uh, motions?
We'll just need one motion on, on this one, which would be, the motion itself would be to, um, uh, waive for the reading of ordinance number 2020-20 and introduce for first read.
This is for, for both of three to?
It, it's all one ordinance.
It's all one.
It's a very long, uh, title, but it's one ordinance.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so moved, seconded by Councilman Vaccaro. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Moving to item, public hearing, item number 28.
Public hearing and resolution 2020-205 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield adopting the City of Fairfield Senate Bill 743, implementation procedures, which includes thresholds of significance and mitigation measures for vehicle miles traveled, VMT, as required by the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, guidelines implementing SB 743, addressing environmental review of transportation impacts under the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA. And again, our presenter is Brian Miller.
This is a complicated item, so I'll try to make it as, as simple as possible and understandable and clear as possible. But as of July 1st, 2020, the state, state law and the regulatory agencies in the state are requiring the way we do our environmental review of transportation impacts in the city. Um, currently, as you'll see later in the presentation, we use what's called level of service, which is delay at major intersections. Now we're, now the focus will be on how a project reduces the total amount of traffic generated by the project. Um, this is the vehicle miles traveled process, which was developed by our consultant team with input from the staff. Just as a reminder, um, or a background, the California Environmental Quality Act requires us to review all impacts, environmental impacts, disclose those impacts, and address and mitigate significant impacts. Traffic congestion and transportation issues are one of the impacts we cover under CEQA. Currently, the, as I mentioned, transportation impacts are assessed based on a level of service, which measures typical delay at intersection. The state is now mandating that we use a different approach, um, which is the vehicle miles traveled. The focus, and the focus of that partly is, again, on climate change, greenhouse gas emissions, as well as promoting infill development and active transportation, like bicycles and, um, and walking. The current level of service can actually make it more difficult to approve infill projects, so the state is now mandating that we use this VMT approach. As I mentioned, vehicle miles traveled replaces level of service. It measures the number of trips and total distance. The goal is to reduce the total trips and steer development in areas that require less vehicle travel or offer more alternative modes. What we're doing tonight is we're adopting, the attachment to your report, is adopting new thresholds to implement the VMT requirements and CEQA review, and basically that's based on, on the work done by DKS and summarized in the attachment to your staff report. State garden, guidance is to reduce total vehicle miles traveled by 15%, and for commercial industrial uses, no net increase in, in VMT, and for infrastructure as well. The key thing that's going to be useful in, in actually implementing this vehicle miles traveled action is identifying screening criteria, ways we can look at a project right up front and say, it's unlikely that this project will have an impact and, on VMT beyond what's permitted, recommended by the state guidelines. And your staff report contains a variety of ways that we are going to be using, using the guidelines to screen away projects. Um, that includes location within areas with a lot of existing transportation options, um, smaller retail projects that are not likely to have significant VMT impacts, and in fact, may reduce VMT because you're building retail near housing, and projects that build, include building like bicycle lanes and, and pedestrian sidewalk connections and active transportation options. So, I mean, there are a variety of, of screening criteria. This just shows a map. All the areas in green, for example, can be screened out immediately as not having VMT. This also shows the areas around our transportation node that will also be screened out and not needing further analysis. So most of many of these projects will be less than significant. Projects that are not screened out will require formal analysis by a consultant team, typically hired by the larger developers who are doing the larger projects that cannot be screened out. There are a variety of mitigation measures. As with all environmental findings, there are a variety of mitigation measures that are available, um, projects, and I might point out that the general plan update that's now getting away, well, underway, will allow us to do further analysis of VMT and come up with community-wide VMT mitigation measures that will also be very helpful in screening out projects. We can still look at level of service. If a project is going to cause an interchange to crash, I mean, that's still in our general plan currently, and we can still, but we just can't make a CEQA finding, and that's a technical issue under California Environmental Quality Act law, but that doesn't mean we're going to ignore level of service in, in the city. Our recommended action is to adopt the resolution approving the Fairfield SB 743 implementation program, which includes the baselines, thresholds of significance, mitigation measures, and other policy changes. And I might point out that our consultant with DKS, Aaron Vaca, is here tonight as well, and we can answer any questions.
Thank you for the report, counsel. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. I have no request to speak cards on this matter, so if you care to speak on this issue... I have no request to speak cards on this matter, so if you care to speak on this issue, please step forward now. Seeing no one stepping forward, I will close the public hearing and bring it back for council action. Mr. City Attorney?
Ball five.
Okay. So moved by Councilman Tim, seconded by Councilman Vaccaro. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving now to public hearing. Agenda item number twenty-nine.
Public hearing and resolution 2020-206 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, approving required findings relating to the amendment of the 2019 California Building Code, also known as Chapter Five Building and Housing Code of the City of Fairfield Municipal Code, and first reading and introduction of ordinance 2020-21 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, amending Chapter Five of the City of Fairfield Municipal Code and amending Chapter Thirty-One, Section Three, Thirty-One, Zero Nine of the California Building Code, requiring pool barriers as a required safety feature. And our presenter is Chief Building Official Jeff Thomas.
Good evening, Madam Vice Chair, uh, Madam...
You can just call me Pam.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for having me tonight. I'm here to present an amendment to our, after five of our municipal code. During a rewrite of our ordinance a year ago, a section of the historical amendments that the city had carried forward was inadvertently omitted from the update. And that amendment was a pool barrier requirement for all swimming pools within the City of Fairfield. It also was supposed to align with new changes to the California Swimming Pool Safety Act that occurred a couple of years ago, changed from requiring one safety measure to two. And while the required pool fencing is one of seven potential options of now two required safety measures, as previously mentioned, the City of Fairfield required a pool barrier around swimming pools that protects from inadvertent drowning, especially from young children. It has been determined by the State of California and other jurisdictions across the country that swimming pools are an attractive nuisance to young children, and the lack of proper safety measures is one of the greatest causes of pool drownings in young children. So based on our historical amendment and the improvement that this will carry forward for our ISO rating, which is our service office rating, will ultimately either maintain or if we improve our rating, lower property insurance rates for citizens in the city. I would recommend that you adopt the findings resolution and agree to adopt the ordinance for the first read.
Thank you very much for your report, counsel. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, let me open the public hearing. I have no request to speak cards. If anyone cares to speak on this matter, please step forward now. And as no one is stepping forward, I will close the public hearing, bring it back for council action.
And we have two actions to be taken by the council. The first item would be to adopt resolution number 2020-206.
Do I hear them? So moved by Councilman Vaccaro, seconded by Councilman Tim. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
And the second action will be on the ordinance, and this would be a motion to waive further reading of ordinance number 2020-21 and introduce for first reading.
So moved by Councilman Vaccaro, seconded by Councilman Tim. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Our final item for the evening, public hearing, item number thirty.
Public hearing regarding draft short-range transit plan, SRTP for Fairfield and Sassoon Transit. And our presenter is Diane Feinstein, Feinstein Public Works Transportation Manager.
Good evening. I'm here tonight... Good evening. I'm here tonight to present Fairfield and Sassoon Transit Short-Range Transit Plan, which is more commonly referred to in the transit world as the, by the acronym SRTP. The SRTP is a ten-year operations and capital plan that's updated every four years and reviews existing agency performance standards, and it provides an opportunity for Fairfield and Sassoon Transit to identify new goals. And the city is required to hold a public hearing as part of the approval process. Solano Transportation Authority coordinates development of the SRTP in collaboration with the other Solano County transit agencies. Individual plans are completed for each agency service area. For FAST, that service area includes both the cities of Fairfield and Sassoon City. FAST SRTP covers following local services: local fixed route, and right now we have eight fixed routes, and two commuter routes. We have paratransit service, and we have subsidized local taxi service. FAST SRTP was almost complete when our transit service was greatly impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Completion of this project was set aside while all the transit operators refocused their efforts to deal with the pandemic. Service was greatly reduced because of the Bay Area shelter-at-home and in-place orders. Fares were also eliminated to protect and lessen contact between passengers and drivers, and fares have continued to be eliminated. We're going to evaluate it at the end of the year. After FAST partially restored local and commuter service on July sixth, county transit operators revisited the finalizing SRTPs. There was consensus to have this SRTP just reflect pre-COVID circumstances, because we are still in the midst of the pandemic, and we really don't know what the long impacts of the pandemics will be. Initial thoughts are that local service will become increasingly more important than commuter service as more people work from home, and will, as a result, be focused on local rather than regional transit. So just, just as information for you during the pandemic, ridership decreased eighty percent, fare revenue decreased ninety-five percent, and, and right now, service hours are still only at sixty-five percent of pre-COVID levels. The SRTP presents operating and capital plans to maintain current services. A major capital focus for the next several years is to implement California mandate to move from purchasing diesel and diesel electric, diesel hybrid buses to purchasing electric buses. City Council has previously approved FAST working with Will Dan, who has, who is a consultant hired to, to develop a transit electrification fleet replacement and infrastructure plan at the Fairfield Corporation Yard. In addition to FAST short, short-range transit goals, FAST will undergo its first comprehensive operational analysis, or COA, during 2021 to prepare for both post-COVID-19 service. A COA incorporates stakeholder input and recommends innovative and cost-effective transit options to city council to focus and to focus, focus expected transit funding over the next ten years. We are, we are just finishing up a request proposal process to identify a COA consultant who will guide staff through this process, which will include seeking your and other public stakeholder input in the, into this process. The recommended COA consultant contracted will be presented for your approval in December. I'll be happy to answer any questions about the short-range transit plan prior to holding the required public hearing.
Okay, thank you for the report, counsel. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. I have no request to speak cards. If you wish to speak on this item, please step forward now. Seeing no one stepping forward to speak, let me close the public hearing and bring it back for council action.
Uh, in this case, the only action would be to receive the report, so there's no need to take any formal action on this item.
Okay. That is the last item on our agenda, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening. We will adjourn this meeting in the loving memory of Jose Chipo Cortez. This meeting of the Fairfield City Council is adjourned to Tuesday, November seventeenth, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. Please remember to vote. Thank you, and have a nice evening.